It is nine o'clock. I'm going to ask if we stand for invocation and pledge of allegiance. And Pastor Hall will give us the invocation this morning.
Good morning. Creator, Sustainer, Giver of all life, we thank you for the opportunity to be here today to serve our community and for the privilege of participating in this meeting. We ask for your guidance and wisdom as we work together to address the challenges and the opportunities before us. May our talks today be filled with good listening guided by fairness, integrity, and a commitment to the common good. May we listen to each other with respect and seek common ground, and may our actions reflect the best interests of everyone. We pray that we may be able to make decisions that will benefit our community and uphold the values of Washington County, of democracy, and above all, the human dignity of everyone involved. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda is approval of the minutes from March 4th. Looking for a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of the March 4th, 2025 minutes. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed, four oh. Next up is commissioners' reports and comments. And Commissioner Wagner, would you like to go first?
Yeah, thank you. Hey, good morning, everybody. Looking forward to today's meeting and meeting with the joint meeting with the Board of Washington County Public Schools. I don't have much, only maybe a little information that people don't realize, some history, Maryland Day today. It's Maryland Day, March 25th, was in 1634, the landing of the first settlers on St. Clement's Island. And I bet most people don't know what the name of the two ships were, was the Ark and the Dove. So that's my trivia and my information for today.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
I don't have much to contribute today, but I do want to call out Jeff Klein because he received a certificate from the halfway fire department.
Fair Play.
Excuse me, Fair Play, Fair Play Fire Department for his outstanding contributions to, you know, fire support in the county. And it was a recognition well deserved because he is one of the staunchest defenders of public safety and our public safety force across the county. So I want to second that. Thank you so much for what you've been doing. I've learned a lot from you about the fire and police and, you know, EMS safety issues across the county.
Very much.
Mr. Klein?
To add on to that, first, thank you for that recognition. Fair Play, I know we had some struggles with them back in 2012, and they battled back and became one of the best fire volunteer fire companies in this county. Their volunteer spirit, their fundraising to help support that community fire company is admirable. So thank you, and thank you to the folks of Fair Play Volunteer Fire Company. I'd like to begin, I did attend the opening day of the Maryland Film Festival. Want to thank Tom Reifert, Nicole Hauser, and Paulie up there. I was there for the opening ceremony, people from all over the world, I would say was there. Barbara Ingram had a couple students or films entered and got to meet those young folks. So it was a very nice opening event representing Hagerstown, Washington County. And again, I did attend the Fair Play Fire Company banquet. We did recognize Scott Frye for his four years of being the president of the fire company and his spirit of helping down there as a volunteer. They don't get paid. And then I also attended the Mugginsville Ruhr Tan who honored Dave Keener, elderly gentleman who has donated over his lifetime 35 gallons of blood. Tremendous impact on the lives of Washington County, and each one of those pints saved a life or helped extend the life. So Mr. Keener, you are a local superhero. And today, I'd like to wish former Mayor Mickey Maris of Spitsburg a happy birthday. I didn't bother to see how young she was, but Mayor Maris, if you're listening, happy birthday. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. Again, first off, congratulations. I know how hard and tirelessly you worked back in 2012 with Fair Play Fire Hall.
And you were there as well, sir, by my side.
You were a staunch supporter of all that. Busy week, the past week. Last night, I had the opportunity to leave MML, Monthly Dinner Meeting and skipped out of there early and went over to the Maryland Theater for the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. It was well attended. There was athletes, what they call huddle groups from each of the high schools and some of the junior highs, and it was a very nice event. And actually, it was emceed by Andrew Seraphini and the Board of Directors of the Christian Fellowship of Athletes. So hats off to Scott Maris. He is the local leader, and he does a fantastic job with that and working with many students throughout Washington County. Last Tuesday evening, I, at the conclusion of our joint meeting with Mayor and Council in Funkstown, I hustled over to the Maryland Theater, and I had a granddaughter that was participating. And if you look over this side-by-side orchestra, listing of both junior high and high school students, most of which are from Washington County, I think there was a few that they came over from Frederick County, there's about 150 students that were on stage with the professionals under the Maryland Symphony Orchestra. And it's called side-by-side. And these students practiced for last Tuesday night's performance, got to share with professionals, and really helped, I'm sure, the musical talents and careers of many of these 150 students. Very proud of them. It was quite, quite the concert and collusion, the final two songs. It was a combination of the entire orchestra and all 150 of the students together, and it was, it was quite impressive. Also, I've told a number of people I'm about wore out this week, the weekly trips to Annapolis. Last Wednesday was no different. County Administrator and I traveled to Annapolis and spent the day down there. We, we got to meet with our Senator Paul Quarterman. We met with Dylan Goldberg from the Governor's Office, and we spent several hours at probably the final legislative meeting of Mako, Maryland Association of Counties for this year. And I'm sure the, so many of jointly across both sides of the aisle at Mako, we have the urban counties, the rural counties, and never, and I've said this before, never in all the years I've been involved with Mako has I, have I seen such a collective group that many of the bills, they're not even looking at to put amendments on them, but it's flat out, let's kill them. Let's kill the bill. It's a bad bill. And it's just, in my mind, very problematic and very troublesome, some of the, the things that Annapolis has to deal with. So I guess stay tuned. I don't know what else to say. Upcoming events in, where are they, here? Thought I had them. I don't know. Oh, here they are. Upcoming events, Maryland Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, multi-chamber event tomorrow evening at 5:30, and that is being held at Meredith's Park. So I'm sure that'll be well attended and a nice affair. Boys and Girls Club Annual Youth of the Year Dinner this Thursday, March 27th at 5:00 PM. That's at Fountainhead Country Club. Washington County Career Expo, Friday, March 28th at 10:00 AM, Hagerstown Community College. We've got an Eagle Scout Ceremony for Chase Starliper this Saturday at Mugginsville Ruhr Next week, April the 2nd, the Chamber has their eggs and issues at 7:00 AM at the Meredith School of Osteopathic Medicine. And the third annual anti-human trafficking, trafficking summit is Friday, April the 4th at 9:00 AM at the Maryland Theater. And last but not least, Commission on Aging, Light of the Night Legacy Gala, Saturday, April the 5th, 6:00 PM, and that's being held at the St. James School. And just a friendly reminder, there is no B O C C meeting next week. So have we missed anything, anything we want to add? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is under Tab 1, and that is a proclamation for the American Red Cross Month. And I know we have folks here from representing the Red Cross. Ironically, they're in red.
I figured I'd wear the right color today.
Jeff?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to introduce our new Executive Director here for our, not just Washington County, but our Greater Shenandoah Valley Chapter, Deborah Fleming. And we have grown in my time volunteering with the Red Cross, which is almost 50 years from just Washington County, to now, it was first all of Western Maryland, Frederick, all the way to Garrett, and now with the latest restructuring, we are the northernmost part of the Greater Shenandoah Valley, and our chapter area now encompasses 12 chapters serving the entire panhandle of West Virginia, all the way over to Romney, down to Hardy County with Moorefield, and then over into the Shenandoah Valley, down to Woodstock, Shenandoah County, across the mountain to the other fork to, to Page County where Larey is, and then Front Royal and the entire Northern Virginia area around Frederick and Clark Counties with Winchester and Berryville. So it's an extensive territory and very blessed to have Deborah with us as our Executive Director. And we are maintaining the headquarters of this chapter here in Hagerstown in our recently built building on Conrad Court in the east end of Hagerstown, right, right here in Washington County. With that, I'll turn it over to Deborah.
I'd just like to thank all of you for allowing us to come here today and to present. Natural disasters have been increasing in frequency and intensity and are occurring in areas typically that haven't seen such national, natural disasters. In 1980, the American Red Cross responded to three national disasters a year. Last year, we responded to 27, and this year, we're on target to double that. You have seen the devastation caused by storms, most recently impacting North Carolina, Kentucky, and West Virginia communities just like your own. Every community needs to prepare for disaster, so when roads and bridges are, get washed away and power lines and communication tools are down, families have the knowledge and resources they need to stay well until help can arrive. One of the other unseen costs of disasters and inclement weather is the loss of blood products. When blood drives have to close due to storms, we lose, lose lifesaving resources that we cannot replace. The American Red Cross helps to prepare communities before a disaster occurs, whether big like the North Carolina or Kentucky floods or small like a single-family fire. Last year in Washington County, we collected over 3,343 units of blood, assisted approximately 68 families who experienced a disaster, installed 94 smoke alarms, provided nearly 58 services to military veterans and their families, trained nearly 1,915 people in lifesaving skills, and nearly 320 students in preparedness education. The American Red Cross could not fulfill its mission without the dedicated volunteers such as Al, who give selflessly of their time and the generosity of our donors. And yet, due to the chronic state of our disaster relief operations and constant need for blood, we are always in need of blood drive sponsors, blood donors, volunteers, and financial donations. This 25th day of March, 2025, I ask that you declare March as Red Cross Month to recognize the hard work and dedication of the volunteers who serve this community and the donors who support our mission.
And I'll just echo that Red Cross truly is a volunteer-based organization. We have the staff that's the glue that holds us all together, but literally, you know, it's volunteers at all level. Commissioner Klein, you mentioned that 35 pint blood donor earlier in your comments this morning.
Gallon.
A gallon, which is truly incredible because that's eight times that. And, you know, folks like that at all levels, supporting a community effort to help our fellow citizens is so critical. And whether it's that individual blood donor or somebody helping with a single-family fire disaster, or whether it's folks like myself that serve in board leadership positions, it takes a village to make this effort possible. And so thank you for having us here this morning and for the recognition of declaring this month, March Red Cross Month. Thank you.
Couple of comments. Mr. Keener's brother, I believe, donated 22 gallons.
Wow.
And I believe approximately 10 years ago, we had a celebration at our Dantina Battlefield at the monument for the Red Cross.
Yes.
Beautiful day, and presentations are made out there to honor your organization.
That was one of the first monuments honoring Clara Barton. That was first put up back at the centennial of the battle in 1962, and then, as you were saying, rededicated recently, I think close to the 150th anniversary.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Al. Thank you, Deborah. We do have a proclamation. It's my honor to present this. My sister was Executive Director of the local Red Cross for about 30 years, and so I'm honored to present this.
Thank you, John. Yes, Julie was instrumental in helping to get our new chapter service center done. And truly, we're here and, and present in Washington County in strong force.
It's my honor to present the American Red Cross Month, March 2025. Whereas during the American Red Cross in March, we recognize the compassion of the people of Washington County and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. And whereas this generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances the humanitarian legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviating suffering. And whereas today, kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment as they provide a beacon of hope and our neighbors in mind. Through their voluntary and well, selfless contributions, they make a lifesaving difference in people's darkest hours, whether it is delivering shelter, food and comfort during disasters, and veterans and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, serving lives with the first, and CPR and other skills are delivering and recommending loved ones separated by global crisis. Whereas the Red Cross assists families impacted by a disaster such as a home fire or flood, installs free smoke detectors, making homes safer, eliminates, or educates students in preparedness education, collects blood at local blood drives, and provides services to our military members, veterans, and their families. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County Maryland, do recognize the month of March as American Red Cross Month in honor of all those who have led with their hearts in service, serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join in the commemoration and strength of our community, awarded this 25th day of March, 2025. Congratulations.
You all have the placement there. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Please do. I can't believe that was that long ago. Thank you all so much, and happy Maryland Day!
Okay, next item, next item on the agenda under Tab 2 is the FY 2026 General Fund Budget Proposed Draft 2.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kelsey Mace, Chief Financial Officer. And today, I'm bringing forward to you Draft 2 of the FY 26 General Fund Budget. Draft 2 is balanced, and the budget total does remain at $326,805,540. All adjustments made for Draft 2 of the General Fund Budget were made in expenditures as we did not make any changes to our revenues. Adjustments in Draft 2 include increasing the retiree COLA from 0.25% to 1%, changes to personnel requests to include, to include an upgrade to the Director of Emergency Management and Communications position from a grade 17 to a grade 18, and the change of a new position from, in IT, from Chief Information Officer at grade 20 to a Network Security Engineer at a grade 16. Also, a digital budget for part-time wages was added for the election board. Increase in the operating budget for IT was to include funds for contracted website services. Increase in operating budget for emergency management for consulting services for the Emergency Management Operations Plan. Increase to Commission on Aging to budget, all right, increase to Commission on Aging Budget to fully fund their request. Increases in transfers to other funds based on balancing of those fund budgets. And all of these increases were offset by a decrease in transfers to the Capital Fund Reserve. So this slide shows the proposed FY 26 revenues by source. The FY 26 budget is funded 91% by property and income tax. This slide shows the FY 26 proposed expenditures by category. Washington County Public Schools, Fire and EMS, and Police and 911 make up 63% of our FY 26 budget. This slide here illustrates that while the FY 26 budget is a 26 million or 8.7% increase over the FY 25 budget, it is only a 7 million or 2% increase over the FY 24 final actual received. And for our larger priority areas of the budget, I just wanted to give, provide some illustrations. So here shows a 10-year history of the fund, the county portion of funding for Washington County Public Schools as it compares to enrollment. Funding for the Washington County Public Schools is our single largest expenditure at 36% of our budget. The 26-county appropriation supports 21,584 students. The Board is committed to public safety. The FY 26 budget, public safety makes up 28% of our expenditures. This is a history of funding for police and 911, which includes funding for Sheriff's Department, Detention Center, Emergency Management, and 911 Communications Center. This category has increased an average of 7% per year over the last 10 years. This slide here shows a history of the funding for EMS and fire, which includes funding for county emergency services as well as volunteer fire and rescue companies. This category has increased an average of 22% per year over the 10-year period. 98 positions have been added since 2017. So that concludes my brief overview of Draft 2. At this time, I'll take any of your questions.
Questions, comments?
Commissioner Barr, may I interrupt?
Sure.
We had a late arrival, someone from the Red Cross we sat with there out at the Ruhr Tan. Mr. Art, would you like to introduce her, just to, just to acknowledge?
This is Lisa Wilf. She is our account manager for this area and for the bio men.
Sorry for the interruption, but I wanted to acknowledge your hard work and what you've done. Thank you.
She's the one that does behind-the-scenes coordinating with our blood drive sponsors and our different folks, just making sure that the blood supply stays fulfilled for our community.
Kelsey, you're open. Go ahead.
Thanks, Commissioner Klein.
I'm ready for your comments.
Okay.
I have none.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kelsey.
Next item is under tab three, FY 26 Water Quality Budget.
Rachel, Director of Environmental Management.
Kelsey Mace, Chief Financial Officer.
Good morning, Commissioners. Last year, the Board approved a multi-year water and sewer rate increase. The approved water increase was 5% and the approved sewer increase was 3.5%. These rate increases have been applied to the calculation of projected revenue for the FY 26 budget. The Water Quality Fund includes Utility Fund, Water Fund, and Sewer Fund and Pretreatment Fund. Something important to keep in mind is related to these funds that they share employees and therefore wages and benefits are allocated based on prior years between the funds. First, we're going to go through the Utility Admin Fund, which provides support and service to water and sewer operations of water quality. Since provided included administration, laboratory testing, maintenance of vehicles, and utility fund, utility facility. The budget increased by $614,000, with the majority of that increase being $435,000 for salary and benefits and another $224,000 in related to operational costs. Part of those operational costs includes $176,000 that's budgeted in the stormwater and watershed services for mowing of the stormwater management ponds. And capital outlay also increased by $45,000. The Utility Fund saw overall increase of 9.77% from FY 25. Does anybody have any questions on Utility Fund?
I'm hearing any.
Okay, then we'll move on to the Water Fund. The Water Fund had an overall increase of $32,400. Of that, $37,580 related to salary and benefits. We had an increase of $53,660 for operational costs, and then the capital outlay was decreased by $58,840. The Water Fund continues to face an operational shortage and require a general fund subsidy of $176,480. Does anybody have any questions on the Water Fund? Okay, we'll move to the Sewer Fund. The Sewer Fund increased by $1,789,400. Salary and benefits accounted for $354,860. We had an increase of $1,376,430 for operational costs, which is debt service mainly. And then we also had a capital outlay of $57,750. Fund balance of $597,970 is being used to bridge the shortfall, which is also down from last year, which was $1,933,000. The budget does include the 3.5% increase for the sewer rates. Does anybody have any questions on the Sewer Fund? The last fund is the Pretreatment Fund. The Pretreatment Fund was privatized in 2006 through a long-term lease, and as a result, operational functions are no longer the responsibility of the Water Quality Department. This privatization allowed the county to maintain compliance with EPA regulations at a substantial savings. The cost in this fund is debt service of $443,560, and the lease payment we receive is $345,000. The remainder is drawn from the fund balance. Does anybody have any questions on the Pretreatment Fund?
Just one more, or maybe two. These increases on all four funds, how much is that due to state mandates from what we're -- do you have any idea about, is any of it due to state mandates?
Mainly, the state mandates will be in the capital improvement budget where we have to implement new treatment processes. So that's where you're going to see the bulk of the, excuse me, the bulk of the expenditures associated with unfunded mandates such as BFOs. We do have some operational costs in here. We do have to use additional chemicals to help us achieve our goals and our permits. So we do have some costs associated with the operational expenses, but the majority of it is in the CIP.
Okay. And then the other question was, so it's, you're definitely, by doing the Pretreatment Fund, the subcontract out for lack of better words is definitely a savings to the county?
It does have some advantages, yes. Their response for the maintenance of the facility, the upkeep of the tanks, equipment, and all those expenses that go along with actually owning and operating a facility, they have all been transferred to the leasing, so we don't have to maintain it, so they take care of all that.
Okay. That's all good.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Fees. We will have some other additional fee increases that are proposed up during the normal rate hearing process. We're looking at plan review fees and a couple other fees, like for cross connection policy that we were in here last week for, but those fees will be brought up at a later date.
The revenue from those fees is included in the budget, correct?
Correct. Sorry. Yes.
Okay. Very good. Next item, tab number four, FY 26 Highway Budget.
Good morning. Zane Ral, Deputy Director of Highways.
Andrew Ashwin, Director of Public Works. Want to start off by spending a little bit of time talking about the revenue portion of the budget. So as you know, many of you know, since 2009, the Highway Fund has shifted mostly by being predominantly supported by highway user revenue, which is the share of the state-levered vehicle taxes and fees that get distributed to the counties and municipalities, since we're not able to levy those fees at a local lever ourselves, to something that's largely supported by the County General Fund. And in the current year budget, that county contribution from the General Fund is $10.7 million. And each year, you know, this remains a top priority of the county. We plead to MDOT and our CTP meeting and the state delegation to restore and distribute those funds in a more equitable manner. But it does seem like each year that passes, there's kind of a distant memory of what that used to look like in terms of a funding source. The bill that passed several years ago did provide some small incremental increases over several years, and so we're currently in that period. But the county's share is still only 3.5% of that overall funding source, and that does yield about $3.4 million in our current budget for the Highway Department. I'd like to point out that in FY 28, however, that temporary bill that was passed to restore those funds after FY 27, so in FY 28, the county's share would drop to 1.5% if no other action is taken. And the original funding formula, when the highway user revenue was set up to share these funds, more or less in line with the responsibilities of all the jurisdictions across Maryland, was over 15%. So we're talking about, you know, years ago, back even 2009, receiving $10 million to now about three and a half, and that's not counting for inflation. So again, it seems like it's maybe wishful thinking that that would get restored one day, but it's the funding situation that we're in. And so even though it's the Highway Fund, it's largely funded by the County General Fund today. On the expense side, they're divided into six different cost categories. The Highway Department Operations, Road Maintenance, Snow Removal, Storm Damage, Traffic Control, and Fleet Management, and I'm going to turn it over to Zane, a little bit more about some of those areas in detail.
I'd like to take a quick second and thank staff from Highways, IT, and Budget and Finance for their help with the budget prep. I wanted to touch base on a few different line items that the percentage of increase is high and give a quick explanation. Snow removal, contract purchase service, 26.58% increase or $42,000. That's what we pay our snow removal contractors out of. Storm damage is 733%. It was a $44,000 increase. We went from $6,000 to $50,000 request. That's what we use for crane rental when we clean out behind our stone arch bridges. Traffic control, we had an 18.34% for contract purchase services, worth $31,000 increase. Painting prices went from eight cents a foot to 11 cents a foot. And then fleet management, machinery and equipment, you'll see a 206% increase for That will reflect an upgrade for our three fueling sites for the fuel pedestals. They're between 10 to 15 years old. This upgrade tech support will be able to come more in line with, I guess, IT. So does anybody have any questions?
Questions or comments? Inflation? Inflation? Is that?
It is hitting us, but actually, our salt prices were down from last year. And it does seem like, I'll say asphalt and concrete has sort of leveled off. It seemed like the last three or four years, you know, prices were just going up, 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 but it seems like it has leveled off.
When we pave, how many miles do we get to the million dollars?
I think this year, engineering has about, and I may be wrong in this, four or five miles. They take care of the overlay.
Okay. How many, how many miles are we going to pave in this projected budget?
Yeah, that'll be brought forward as part of the pavement maintenance contract through engineering. But again, it is, it's, there's some milling, there's some crack fill, so they do basically single-digit numbers on the overlay side, which is more expensive, and then the chip seal side where they do pavement patchwork, and then the chip seal application is about 30-some miles.
And line painting, which is important.
Yeah, we typically try to do 130 miles per year. Now, that varies because some roads, obviously, there's no lines, some there's only center lines.
For clarity, this is the white line that keeps you on the road during a storm or bad weather.
Yep. Some, some roads, there's four lines, turn lanes, but that, that's our target.
And that number is the plain paint application in some of our more heavily-traveled roads where we have asphalt surfaces, there's thermoplastic pavement markings which have reflective beads and things in them which are a bit more. But they try to hit those rural routes about every, at least, seven years or less.
More than that, yeah. About every three years, if we can.
Andrew, there's an evaluation system for the roads that, don't we have an outside entity that tests the roads and comes up with a scientific assessment of the lifespan of a certain road and when certain types of things might be required? Could you explain that briefly so that everyone has an understanding that this isn't just us looking at a road, but there's a process here?
Correct. I mean, again, that, that part is through engineering, but essentially how the process works is they do have, it's called a pavement condition index. And so the roads are actually driven, and there's, there's technology that's mounted to the, to the vehicle that essentially can pick up to the level of detail, the amount of cracking that's occurring. And so that's kind of the first blush. And then the second wave is, is a physical assessment. There's inspectors that go out and look at those roads. And so in a pavement condition index, they're looking at several factors. One is what that condition is, what the pavement section may be, because some areas, you know, if you have a deeper base, or in other instances, it's essentially a couple inches of material over dirt, you know, will depend on how well it can hold up. And then when they're, they're grouping roads and doing selections, we collaborate with engineering. We sit down, they have a draft list, and there is a certain amount of grouping that occurs, so it's not necessarily always a worst first. So like, for instance, you know, they may look at certain highway sections. So say the western section, if they're going to be working in Woodmont, they'll try to hit the roads out there, which is going to be on this upcoming cycle, and not jump around too much because you lose efficiencies and mobilization. So there is a system and a method in place, and it, and it is quantitative to some degree. And then there's, there's always those kind of instances where we try to collaborate on the prep side, where Highway Department may end up prepping a road that, you know, it's just too rural for equipment, or it's going to be too costly.
And one other thing, even with that ranking, sometimes a road that may be ranked lower as far as being in line to be treated, whether it's paved or chip sealed, that possibly could go get in a worse condition than something that was ahead of it, you know, all depending on weather. It could be development, added, added truck traffic on a bridge project. So sometimes that happens also, that a road would get jumped ahead just because it deteriorated quicker than what the index.
Yeah, there is a cost curve, and so that's a lot of what engineering does and that we collaborate on, is trying to do the right treatment at the right time before it becomes too costly where you're looking at a full road reclamation. So there's different applications for different uses depending where you are on that curve.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, any other questions or comments? Thank you, gentlemen. Next item under tab five, Exploration of Duplication of Services.
Good morning.
Good morning.
President Barr, Commissioners, ladies. When I was first elected to this Board five years ago, there seemed to be contention between our two Boards, and I was really puzzled at the time. I respect, respecting our funding body, and I know we're your biggest lift. However, I believe we have the same purposes, priorities, and primary goals, to do more with less so that our taxpayers are not overburdened. We want to maintain the best educational system in the state, and you've heard me say enough. Our future, all of our futures, are in class today. The question is, where do our services overlap? Are there any that might be unified to save the taxpayers of this county without sacrificing services or the education of our students? Some things that come to mind that are possibilities are healthcare, libraries, snow removal, transportation, maintenance. If you want to explore these avenues or have other ideas, we are certainly open to discussion. Our whole gang is here today. Does anybody have anything else that they might want to add at this point? Commissioners?
I heard a partial list.
You can start, John.
Yes, I'd like to think that we can collaborate and work together, and many of these common, the beneficial, to both of us, and, and certainly to our students and our instructional staff throughout the county.
I just have a few comments regarding cost shifting, and although it would create significant savings potentially for the Board of Education, it would most likely create significant expense for the Washington County Government. So it would most likely mean that there would need to be a realized reduction equal to that increased expense for the county, a realized reduction in the amount that we're transferring over to the Board of Education. So that's something that would need to be considered to make it affordable for the county. You mentioned healthcare insurance. I know that's been something that's been explored in the past. However, our benefits are very different from the Board of Education's benefits. For example, our plan does not cover weight loss medication. I believe your plan does. I'm not saying we should or shouldn't cover that. So some of the things that I would suggest would be to maybe take a look at your plan to see if maybe you need to bifurcate it. to see if maybe you need to bifurcate it and include a lower cost option for people who aren't using those additional benefits. And then a higher cost option for the people who are using those benefits so that they're paying for the services that they're actually using. That might make your healthcare costs a little bit more affordable by reducing it for the people who aren't using it. The other thing that I would recommend that you look at would be your employee versus your employer portion of your premiums paid for adjustment. Those are just some of the things that we look at on a regular basis. What's covered, what's not covered, who's using it, who's not using it? Do we need a Plan A, Plan B? And what are our employees paying versus our employer to make sure that we're being transparent and financially responsible?
I, I'd like to just make a comment philosophically. I think I agree with the intent, and I think that there may be some opportunities to, to find ways to identify efficiencies. And then I think you look at where the compatibility is and you get into the details. I think those are, are details that maybe a, a small working group could, could look at. You probably want to, and I'm just thinking, you know, I could see efficiencies in the libraries right off the bat. And that might save up, open up space for the school system or, I don't know if that would lead to any reduction in, 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 you know, the management team and, and people that work in the library, the librarians, probably not. But, you know, things can be worked out. I can see easily for that happening because there's all kinds of ways to get books and support materials. And if the library, county system is, has those holdings, why duplicate it at the library, at the library of the school? So that would be one area. And I think the missing party here might be the, you know, the county library system. But that, you know, for us to get on board with, with identifying something like that, then I would look at each of the areas, you know, whether it's HR or it's maintenance of buses or it's snow removal, you know, I think it would take a, you know, a small team of our critical staff along with the ones that you would identify to look at, how, what systems may be compatible? What are the actual requirements? What's the scale? You know, what's the timing? What are the rules of, of the game, so to speak? Because your HR rules might not be compatible with ours. And then you'll start looking at what the costs might be, okay? And whether it's a trade-off that, you know, we decrease somewhat, but we find efficiencies in another area. I think that's how this begins, but, you know, I, I am supportive of the, of the idea. And I don't think we can prejudge anything until we actually go down the path of putting together some small teams to look at this. I think at our level, it's, do we support the philosophical approach? And then let's give some guidance and identify some people to, to work through it and then come back and report to the individual bodies here about what may or may not be feasible. And I, that's what I, my thoughts would be at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I, I tend to agree with the, the whole theory. The, the whole theory of, it's like the strength of purchasing, you know? When you combine things, sometimes things, you save some money in volume. And I, I guess my biggest concern would be probably exactly what Commissioner Harvey said. My biggest concern would be, I think, would probably to all of our concerns, what's the collateral damage to Washington County Public Schools or what's collateral damage to Washington County Board of County Commissioners? Where does the money, where's the money with, we're all facing pretty good state mandates right now, and we're all, you know, getting more burden put on us. And I think the theory again is, is a theory that, you know, I would need people a lot smarter than me to figure out the dollars and cents and, and what would make sense and what wouldn't make sense. But again, you know, if, if there's a benefit to everybody involved, then, you know, it's a good theory. So that's sort of where I'm at.
I have a, I have a question for my team because I, this wasn't explained to me. So when you talk about combining libraries, would that mean our media specialists would work with Washington County Library in order? No. Washington County Library would order books for our media? I don't, I don't understand with a theory.
The library thing is an idea where we need space. We have the books in our library. We need our media specialists, but this is just an idea of like when Williams Corp builds a library on our campuses and our kids have access to that library, there are going to be some duplicative services. What are they and how can we best use the services of the county library?
Well, and we have to take into consideration that our library media specialists provide planning time for our.
No one's talking about it.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to get a clarification because I, I, you know, wasn't.
For me.
It's like our new health walk-in system. You know, that, that's a wonderful benefit that we provided to our part of the county. Could it be provided to yours as well? This is simply exploration, identification of any duplicative services that might benefit both of us and a cost savings for our taxpayers.
And for us really to have our teams work together, have the county team and the school board team work together and try to find ways to collaborate. And there may be areas and avenues that we can, and there may be some avenues that we can't. But we just want you to know that we're here to work together and to try to find ways to save money for the, the community, our taxpayers. So we're, that's why we're here today is just to be a team player.
And, and I'd just like to add to, like, to, to your point, Ms. Gordon, you know, th- this isn't something that we can just flip a switch and make it happen, you know? There's the, assuming, you know, at the end of the day, a very large portion of our money comes directly from you guys and, you know, for example, maintenance vehicles, you know? You guys buy maintenance vehicles, we buy maintenance vehicles. Are they really used that much that we both need to have our own sets of them, you know? I don't think there's any way we can really go and completely get rid of some of these duplicative services for the reasons you said, you know? But like, for example, this morning, I was walking my dog and, and three school buses literally were taking the exact same route. One of them was a Lyft bus for kids with special needs. Another one was a typical public school, school bus. And then another one was a Head Start school bus. You know, I, it gets a little tricky when we have, when we're talking about students with special needs that, that require some, some extra services. But, you know, that, that Head Start bus and the, the, the typical school bus, is that something? And I don't know. You know, that's definitely a much deeper conversation. But, uh, you know, I think, um, you know, when we look at our purchasing, you know, a lot of times we're, we are putting out bids for similar services, you know? And some of the things I was looking at, you know, like, you guys need extra help with snow removals. Sometimes we do as well. You know, on molding services, sometimes in the spring or summer, it gets to be a bit much. We need to have people help or, or other computer software services where we all need cybersecurity, you know? Is that something where we can all kind of piggyback on and maybe not necessarily run the same exact system, but at least have similar companies helping us with our systems to be able to go and make that happen, realizing that we'll never be able to completely get rid of them just because at the end of the day, we are two separate entities. But there's still certain efficiencies that I do feel like we can at least combine and maybe not today or tomorrow, but maybe in six months, a year, two years, whatever, maybe slowly start to make that happen. I, I think we can do that to, to be more efficient for the, for the taxpayers of the county.
And so that's the bottom line, and we want to step up to the plate and work with you. We want to save our taxpayers money. We do not want in any way, shape, or form to have collateral damage or to hurt the students in this county or your work as commissioners. So thank you very much for allowing us to come and propose this. And if indeed you're willing to have a study group come together to see if there are some possibilities, we are certainly willing as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is under tab six, no bid tax sale parcels, outstanding tax charge waiver. Good morning.
Running a little bit ahead of schedule here. I know the mayor is, is on his way, but not here yet, but I can go ahead and get started so you can keep you all on, on track. So this is not something new to some of you. We came back here in 2023 to talk about 23 parcels that were up for tax sale that we asked you to withhold from the tax sale so the city could acquire them through the tax sale process. It's a process that state law has been in place for many years to allow people to do this, and they authorized local jurisdictions to do this a few years ago back in 2023. Basically of those 23 that we've already acquired the tax certificates for, we've waited the six-month time period that state law requires to see if anyone would come forward to pay the taxes themselves before the city would start the legal process of acquiring them through the courts. That's what the process that we are in now. Just to keep you up to date, this is part of the strategic plan for the mayor and council to acquire properties through this tax sale process. And, you know, we're seeking another six here now, the upcoming tax sale. I do have a handout to help you all to understand what these six properties were. I know it's all press personnel, all right? Maybe you won't pass the thing here by a hand.
You won't be electrocuted.
And as I could just walk you through those next six that the city is working to acquire, those properties, we went to each site back in November, or I'm sorry, June of 2024 to take a look at the properties to see if they could be rehabilitated or if they needed demolition. And of the properties, I'll just go through them. That 237 Winter Street, that's a single-family structure. It had a minor fire back in 2013, but the structure can be rehabilitated. This owner did pass away in 2015. 319 Wakefield, it's another single-family structure. It's been vacant since 2009. It can be rehabilitated, and this owner passed away in 2006. Two, or I'm sorry, 323 Wakefield, it's another single-family home. These two are actually side by side. 319 and 323 are side by side. The neighbors in this area want something to happen to these very much so. This owner passed away in 2007, so they've been sitting vacant for a very long time. The 204 Devonshire is another single-family structure. It has been vacant since 2020, but the owner passed away in 2018 and it can be rehabilitated. 316 Liberty Street is a single-family home. This one is collapsing. When we went in, the east side of the structure has sunk about four inches. It is starting to collapse. It will need demolish. This owner passed away in 2017. And then the 148 West North Avenue, it is a vacant lot now. It was actually a garage. It was a three-story garage that was on this property. The city just completed the demolition of this. The owner passed away in 2020 and it was collapsing, and we had to look at demolishing it for the safety of the neighborhood. This one abuts the Housing Authority, Harestown Housing Authority plans that they have there. They're actually interested for any acquisition in the future. So we did the walkthrough of these ones. We feel they could be rehabilitated. It is one of those things that we're working with nonprofit organizations that have some sort of a housing redevelopment plans. Some of those have been Community Action Council, the Student Trade Foundation with the Board of Education, and also the Harestown Housing Authority are ones that have shown interest in actually rehabbing these. And Habitat for Humanity has been interested as well. We've had individual meetings with those. So today, what we're asking for is that you certify these six properties to be withheld from the 2025 tax sale, and that's per the Code Mar 14-811C of the tax property article, and then agree to waive the county taxes due to, at the time of city acquisition.
It sounds like to me that, that all, all the owners have passed away, you're not going to get the taxes anyway.
No, we're not.
And the only curious question I have, I see one here, that you said this was June of '23, these pictures and everything?
Uh, these are June of '24.
'24. There's, none of them were inhabited by squatters, et cetera.
No.
I see vehicles, that's why.
No, we've secured the properties. We had actually, we had warrants to go inside each property, and then we re-secured them both, uh, once we exited.
So how long does it take for a tax sale to go through? Two of the homes were sold in a tax sale in '23? Is that correct?
Twenty, we had, I'm sorry, so were these properties sold during the?
Two of them were sold in '23 in a tax sale.
Uh, I do not, I'm not aware of any of these being sold during the '23 tax sale. I mean, they were sold, but not purchased generally.
But it takes a couple of years for that to work through, is my understanding.
So for the city by ordinance, for us to look at acquiring a property through this process, we have to have two consecutive tax sales of no purchases, meaning there are no bid tax sale property. If someone was looking to acquire a property through the tax sale and they paid the bid that was done, and then it goes into a hold for two years until no one maybe follow through because once someone purchases a tax certificate, they have to file a right of redemption foreclosure at Circuit Court. Sometimes people do those as an investment to make money on their.
So was that done in June of '23 on two of the properties or not? And the two years would be up in June of '25 then? So they would have time to complete that?
Of these six here, I am not aware of any of those being paid in that time period. They still have significant balances.
Can you check on that?
I can certainly check on them. Do you know which ones you're talking about? So I could look that up further if you, if you seem like you might know which two.
I'll, I'll get that. I'll send it to you later, I think, if that's okay. Do you have anything on any of the properties? Did you look at them?
No, Commissioner Harvey, as, as Mr. Falk said, this was, the board did this last year. This is, uh, this is allowable in the tax property article of the Maryland code. Frankly, it's, it's up to the board to decide whether they, they want to.
I'm just wondering if there's, if two of those properties are still in process.
I, I'm not aware. I can check with the, with the treasurer to see where he is on these things, but I think Mr. Falk would have a better handle on, on that than certainly I would at this point.
Because I won't want to tread on someone else's initiative that, you know, they put in for the tax sale and they're working through a process, which I am not aware of. I'm not a real estate guy, I'm not a tax guy, so.
Right. They wouldn't be able to go for tax sale this year if there was some sort of pending process for someone to acquire them. So for them to be on the list for this year would lead me to believe there isn't any, that these don't qualify for that withholding. Because if someone got the tax certificate, they cannot be put up for tax sale for two years.
Okay.
That sort of clarified it for me. Is there staff concurrence for this?
Staff concurs. This, uh, will eventually put these properties back on the tax roll.
Motion to support.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion second to support. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? Aye. Four oh. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, John.
Next item, tab number seven, intergovernmental cooperative purchase, 25-0181, emergency operations plan for emergency management and communications.
Good morning. Brandi, Director in Purchasing. The first recommendation I have for you this morning is the intergovernmental cooperative purchase, INTG 25-0181, emergency operations plan for the Emergency Management and Communications Department. Moved to authorize by resolution for the Washington County Department of Emergency Management to purchase services from Tetra Tech to support the county in updating its emergency operations plan based on a proposal dated February 17, 2025. The total amount proposed was $59,841.60. We're also asking for permission to utilize another jurisdiction's contract that was awarded by the Houston-Galveston Area County Cooperative Purchasing Program. Washington County's emergency operations plan is required to be revised every five years and a maintenance review every year. During COVID, the emergency operation plan saw significant changes and additions, and due to the complexity of the changes, an outside consulting firm will be completing the major renovations to the plan. The Code of Public Laws of Washington County, Maryland provides that the Board of County Commissioners may procure goods and services through another jurisdiction's contract as long as we abide by the same terms. as long as we abide by the same terms and conditions of the contract. And we are doing so, uh, with this contract. The county will benefit with a direct cost savings due to the economic scale that the contract has leveraged and there is funding available in the department's budget for this purchase.
Okay. Questions, comments, motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion and second for approval as submitted? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, same sign, four oh. Thank you, thank you. Next item, tab number eight, sole source procurement, um, sixteen seventy-three, uh, maintenance agreement for life pack monitors, defibrillators, devices, automated external defibrillator, uh, and Lucas CPR, uh, devices, year two increase. Mouthful.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing. Uh, the next recommendation is for a sole source procurement, D U R sixteen seventy-three, maintenance agreement for life pack monitors, defibrillators, AEDs, CPR devices. And this is year two and it's, uh, an increase for year two. Moved to approve the increase for year two in the sole source procurement for preventive maintenance. Maintenance includes inspection, repair, parts, labor and travel for the, uh, AEDs, the Lucas, uh, CPR devices and the defibrillators. This was originally approved by the Board of County Commissioners on March fifth, 2024. The original amount of the contract was ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty cents. There is an increase this year of four thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and eleven cents due to the expiration of some warranties on some of the equipment. This is a maintenance agreement to ensure that eight life pack AEDs, thirty-five defibrillators and twenty-four Lucas automated CPR devices are biomedically certified on an annual basis. Additionally, this agreement also covers repair and software upgrades for these devices as well as reduced pricing for the disposables that are used, um, when utilizing the devices. These services are under contract for a period of January twenty-fourth, 2024 and it ends January twenty-fourth of 2027. Funding is available in the amount of a hundred and two thousand, eighty-six dollars in the department's operating budget for this second year of the contract.
Comments, questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second on the floor for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, four oh. Thank you. Next item under tab nine, sole source procurement, sixteen seventy-five, maintenance agreement for Stryker power load stretchers, year two increase.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing. The next recommendation is a sole source procurement, P U R sixteen seventy-five, maintenance agreement for Stryker power load stretchers. This also is a year two increase. Moved to approve an increase for year two on a sole source procurement for the maintenance agreement for the Division of Emergency Services for the Stryker power load stretchers in the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-two cents from Stryker sales out of Chicago, Illinois. The original request was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on March fifth, 2024. Year two pricing increased due to additional equipment being added to the fleet of equipment. This is a maintenance agreement to ensure that twenty-six power load systems and twenty-one stretchers are maintained and inspected on an annual basis. Additionally, the agreement also covers parts, labor and travel. The services are for a period of January twenty-fourth, 2024, from two January twenty-fourth, 2027. And funding is available in the operating budget for this department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, same sign, four oh. Thank you. Next item is contract renewal, sole source award, sixteen twenty-four, uh, school-based health centers.
Last recommendation, uh, Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing. Contract renewal for sole source procurement, P U R sixteen twenty-four, school-based health centers. Moved to renew the contract for a sole source procurement to Maris Medical Center in the amount of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars for operating expenses of school-based mental health centers operated at Western Heights Middle School and South Takers Town High School. The purpose of the services provided are to, are to fulfill the agreement, uh, contained within the grant that we entered into on July first, 2023. The contract was for a period of one year commencing July first, 2023 and ending June thirtieth, 2024, with the option for the county to renew up to two consecutive one-year periods. This is the final year of the renewal. Is the intent of the local management board supported by the contract with the Maryland State Department of Health to support the operations of the school-based health centers, which is operated by Meredith's Medical Center? The Office of Grant Management wishes to apply section one through one oh six point two A and one of the Code of Local Public Laws of Washington County to this procurement. This section states that sole source procurements are authorized and permissible when only one source exists to meet the county's requirements, and that is the case for these services. The total funding allocated is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. There are no county funds, um, needed for this purchase.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and second.
Second.
Motion and second for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Four oh, thank you very much. Next item is proclamation for purchasing month. I didn't know if you had any comments to make or?
Well, I wish they were all here today. Unfortunately, they're not. But purchasing works as a team. We're not just a one unit, you know? All of us take part in every solicitation that we process. So I couldn't do my job without them, as well as they couldn't do theirs without me. It's, it's a team up there and, um, with the transitioning that we just made, um, with prefer return, it's been seamless and, um, they're just a great, awesome people to work with.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much.
Do we have a proclamation to present? Do you want to?
Sure.
Have any fakers to present?
You're the president.
Thanks, goodbye. See if I can do better with this one. Proclamation for purchasing month, March twenty twenty-five. Whereas the purchasing and materials management profession has a significant role in the quality, efficiency and profitability of business and government throughout Washington County and the state around. And whereas in addition to the purchasing of goods and services, the purchasing and materials management professionals engage in or have direct responsibility for functions such as, uh, executing, implementing and administering contracts, developing, uh, forecasts and procurement strategies, supervising and or monitoring the flow and storage of materials and developing working relationships, relationships with suppliers and other departments within the organization. And whereas purchasing professionals make important contributions to ensure the efficient use of taxpayer dollars by providing cost-effective service while maintaining the highest quality standards. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County, Maryland, hereby proclaim the month of March twenty twenty-five as purchasing month. We ask the citizens of Washington County to join us in celebrating the role of the public procurement profession and acknowledging an elite group of professionals that make a difference in governmental efficiency and effectiveness.
Congratulations, partners.
We're going to front for the big picture.
Don't forget about the luncheon tomorrow, Thursday, Thursday.
I was going to bring it, I didn't know if you wanted me to make that public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, thank you, appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, tab twelve, F Y twenty-five budget adjustment, county attorney office.
Good morning, commissioners. Kelsey Mace, Chief Financial Officer. Seeking a motion to approve a budget transfer in the amount of two hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars from the General Fund Department, one one two zero zero, General Operations to Department one zero six zero zero, County Attorney. Staff is requesting the transfer of funds to pay for technical consultant assisting with the Division of Environmental Management project. The transfer will come from the amount budgeted for premiums under the Time to Care Act that will not be required in fiscal year twenty-five and additional vacancy savings created from new positions that are not yet filled. The net impact of this budget adjustment will be zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion and second for approval as submitted? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Four oh, thank you. Next item is staff comments, and first up is, uh, County Clerk, Don Marcus.
Good morning, commissioners. On behalf of the Washington County Public Golf Corporation, I am requesting a motion to reappoint Richard Block and Mike Harsh to serve a second three-year term from June first of 2024 through May thirty-first of 2027. This is not a paid board.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
And, and on behalf of the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board, I am requesting a motion to appoint Brady Johnson the fourth to serve a first full three-year term from April first of 2025 through March thirty-first of 2028. This is not a paid board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Four oh, thank you.
That's all that I have.
That's it. Okay, Michelle Gordon, County Administrator.
Just a couple of things today. Uh, as Commission President Barr already mentioned, I did attend the Mako Legislative Meeting in Annapolis last week. And last night I also attended the, uh, M M L meeting where we were able to meet with our local municipal leaders. And that's everything.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the point in our, uh, meeting here this morning. I need a motion to go into closed session for the following reasons and outlined in more detail on the agenda cover sheet. Oh, you do? Did I miss something? Oh, I'm sorry. You weren't, I'm, okay. Thank you.
I don't, yeah, I didn't have a deal.
I apologize, you weren't on my list.
You weren't, this came late in the day yesterday and that's my apologies because I wasn't aware, I had to do.
I'm glad you just spoke up.
We did need to get in before the next meeting, though. Um, so this actually ties into the conversation earlier with the school board. We could, already collaborate on our number of purchases. Uh, in this case, the upcoming one is going to be natural gas. And so the way that process works is similar. If you remember, I was here with Rick when we talked about electric. The first phase is, uh, they submit technical proposals and they get evaluated. And then there's a gap when they open up the price proposals. Once the price proposals are open on that pricing, it needs to be signed within a, I believe, a twenty-four hour period because essentially you're locking in the price in that futures market. So it's a little backwards from the way we normally do, um, procurement where we have all that information in. But essentially, once we get the information, it's already more or less predetermined that that's the best price. Anything else to add on that?
No, we, we're just looking for permission to sign once the pricing is revealed. Pricing is due back at the Board of Ed on April eighth. And it, there's going to be a meeting held there, um, to review, um, all the proposals that came in. Works just like the electricity bid that we just brought in.
Motion?
Consensus or a motion?
I think you need a motion.
That's pretty, uh, probably.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, motion and second on the floor for approval for, uh, approval of the, is it electric or gas?
Natural gas, yeah.
Natural gas. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed? Four oh, thank you.
Thank you, my apologies again, sir, about that.
Thank you. So we'll go back to, I need a motion to go into closed session for the following reasons and outlined in more detail, uh, on the agenda cover sheet. To discuss confidential personnel matters, to consult with counsel, to obtain legal advice and to go, conduct collective bargaining negotiations.
Motion to go into, uh, recess to closed session, or motion to go into closed session, sorry.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.